Good evening, and welcome to Thursday, November 20th, 2014 Board of Ed Meeting. Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Here.
Secretary O'Rourke? Philip Dalmyer?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Purnier?
Here.
Diane Vumbek?
Here.
Ace with the flag, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, we have a new Board of Ed member, Ms. Ed Cordino, who designed and went ahead for his couple of years of service. So tonight, we'd like to introduce Diane Vumbek. I've known her for over fifteen years, she has a great background. So Diane, welcome to the Board of Education of North Ramford.
Thank you, Ms. Vumbek. Also, welcome, Ms. Vumbek. It's exciting to have you on board. Ms. Vumbek comes to us with a great deal of administrative and teaching experience, both at the high school and middle school level, after leaving the career in the private sector. So I welcome you and look forward to working with you into the future.
Thank you.
Okay, well, my seat. Moving on to visitors, come, let me see the agenda, any visitors? Mr. Potter, welcome back.
Thank you. I just want to give Carter some real good feedback. My two grandkids are just on fire for school. I mean, my wife and I have been helping getting them on the bus in the morning, and Jerome Harrison, I mean, is really, it's doing its job, plus. And they are loving school. My granddaughter, who used to really kind of have to push her, we had taken a trip to New York City this weekend, they were trying to read all the road signs, and, you know, she got hung up on Avenue, which was abbreviated, you know, but, I mean, he's got them on fire over there, and I want to compliment him because, you know, they're loving school. There's no reason not for them not to go to school unless they're sick, and they're having a ball down there, so he's really hit the nail on the head again this year.
That brings it here on Potter. Thank you very much. Mr. Representative.
Hello. Well, first off, on November 4th, MBHS hosted an event commemorating the 50th anniversary of MBHS. Members of class of 1968, '67, '66, and '65 were honored, and they entered into a fun event that included musical presentations from the MBHS Music Department in the auditorium, and address from the senior class president Maggie Vergatti, and guided towards by the MBHS National Honor Society, visiting classrooms all around the school. And finally, a get-together in the cafeteria with keg coffee and yearbooks finished off with reminiscing of yearbooks. Now for a third annual MBHS Cabernet Night, was held on Friday, November 7th, in the cafeteria. A posse dinner was prepared by Michael Auger and members of his staff, with students serving all the spectators multiple-course meals. The night was a success with the MBHS Chorus and Concert Choir performing a series of selections throughout the dinner, with the theme of Monster Match. If you missed the Ed musical night, have no fears, because scheduled for December 10th, the Winter Concert. The MBHS Music Department has been working hard during the last several weeks, preparing for this valuable public performance. Moreover, on November 11th, Veterans Day, several veterans visited MBHS with display tables in the gymnasium. It provided the high school class the opportunity to hear from the veterans themselves. The wonderful gathering included fascinating stories and performances from the MBHS Select Chorus Band. Next, on November 24th, there's a scheduled meeting for all student athletes and their parents for 6:30 p.m. in the North Ramford Auditorium. The meeting will focus on the eligibility requirements for academics and the outcome related to substance abuse. The guest speaker will be Ginger Katz of the Courage to Speak Foundation, who is returning this year to share her insights as a parent and as a now important individual at the topic at hand. Finally, I will conclude with some insight on fall sports. Boys' and girls' soccer and girls' volleyball have closed off with successful seasons in which they exhibited much improvement. Girls' soccer finished off their last game with a huge win at Morgan, while boys' soccer also finished their last game with a 5-1 win against Two Rivers High School. Not only that, girls' volleyball worked hard, demonstrating extreme amount of dedication that shined through on their senior night, when they won a match within their game against Morgan. Football's still underway, having their last game, a huge win of 41-40 in overtime against Morgan. Their next game will be home against Hyde on the night of November 26th. Also, on November 26th, the MBHS Communications Classes will play a SportsCenter video all day in the auditorium for the grades to view. It will feature the Thunderbirds in action through the fall season and provide an exciting preview of the upcoming winter sports.
Thank you very much. Do you want to match your Power Pop football?
Oh, yeah.
How can I let that go? That's a big...
Yeah.
That's important.
I'm not sure on the complete date, I'll get back to you on that, but Powder Pop is underway with practices for all the girls who have signed up, and then we'll be performing a Powder Pop game against all the girls of the classes.
I think it's the first weekend in December, it's a Sunday on the football field. We usually do the great turnout, there's over a hundred girls that participate representing each class, and then the boys coach the teams, and it's a great fundraiser, and they have a lot of fun, so, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you, me too.
Bye-bye. Okay, approval of previous minutes?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 16th, 2014 Board of Education meeting, yes, and, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Stand.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Vumbek?
Stand.
Okay, now moving on to personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement resignation of Mrs. Anita Ward, Library Media Specialist at North Ramford High School after over eighteen years of dedicated service to the students of North Ramford.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Vumbek?
Yes.
Okay, no appointments, no leaves. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Anita Ward and thank her for her dedication to the high school, the school system. She's done a wonderful job over the years, and she gave us word early on that this was going to be her last year, and we certainly appreciate that. We'll start interviewing on Monday, we have a number of interviews Monday afternoon, and we'll get back to you with how we make out on Monday. So again, thank you to Anita. Under donations, there's nothing listed at this time, but I do want to update you on the homecoming game. Our student rep spoke to the 50-year reunion of the high school and the classes that came back, and I want to compliment Mr. Steffler, I think he did a wonderful job reaching out to, as you recall, we moved that from a Thursday event to a Saturday night event due to the weather, and we lost quite a few of the graduates who had prior commitments, but they were there that evening, and I think most importantly, they came back and had the chance to spend time, starting in the auditorium and then touring the high school with our National Honor Society. And the entire staff was in the building, and they were able to get a feel for now what high school is like, and the offerings, and the changes since they had been there back in the early '60s. The building is still same, the color of the walls are still same, the tiles, the bathrooms are still same. That's my cue for the new bathrooms. They really were thrilled with the personnel, and they echoed that, and they certainly shared with me how proud they were to be graduate, and how far the school has come, so congratulations to the high school for really shining. Under donations, speaking of the homecoming, you know that we had the Love for Lila event, and we are looking to present a donation of over $20,000 next week to the family, and that's a thank you to the North Ramford community. We could not have done that event without the generosity and commitment of everyone in this town that continuously steps up when someone is in need, and we've seen that over and over and over again, and that's more important than any work that we do, certainly. So if you were fortunate enough to be there that night for the fireworks show, and we had a football game, with everything else going on, we squeezed that football game in, it was a wonderful night, so thank you to all who participated.
The fireworks were pretty seeing Mr. Sokoloff?
Mr. David Sokoloff did donate that fireworks show, so thank you to him.
That was phenomenal.
It really was amazing, for fifteen minutes to stand there, and I have a great picture of the team with the fireworks going off in front of them, they're all lined up, and then they dedicated the game ball to Lila. It was just a beautiful night overall.
It was a great night.
So moving on to the briefs, I'm not going to obviously read through the board briefs. If you look at what the buildings have been up to with the professional development, we'll speak to that a little bit later. Tracy will, but a lot of great things have been happening in and out of all of the buildings. I echo what Mr. Potter says, but for all four buildings, the culture and climate, it's been exceptional, and the administrators have been working hard and really putting a great deal of time and effort into making sure that our schools are safe and productive. So I want to recognize all of them, and I do want to embarrass Mr. Potter. He came in on Veterans Day, all four schools had assemblies throughout the day. Mr. Potter came in and spoke to our middle school students on that Monday prior to Veterans Day, and really touched a lot of students with what he had to say about his experiences in Vietnam. We had over seventy veterans, I was fortunate enough to be present for Dr. Welch's ceremony at Jerome, it was phenomenal, with the music, the veterans from all generations, many World War II veterans there, and the same at the high school with Mr. Steffler. We're losing that population at a thousand per day, and we're running out of time, so to have that many World War II veterans there sharing their stories was exceptional. And Totucket had your orchestra, Dr. Lindsay was...
We had members of the New Haven Symphony Orchestra perform for the students.
And they did patriotic songs and had involvement and recognized the veterans that were there, and it was spectacular. And so kudos to all four buildings for reaching out. We go to school on that day for a reason, and we expose our students and our staff to what, you know, our veterans have done to give us these freedoms, so it was a great thing. Any questions? Okay, letter from the National School Climate Center. Carter, this must be your night tonight, after Mr. Potter said way into that. There's a beautiful letter attached, as you can see, from the National School Climate Center. Dr. Welch is going to serve on a national committee there, going to come into Jerome Harrison, they're going to see some of the things that go on in all of the buildings, and look at some of the work that Dr. Welch has done with school climate, not only obviously at Jerome, but prior to coming to Jerome at the high school. So I think he really represents a broad spectrum and reach of ages for climate, and I know the State Department of Ed is very interested in what's been happening in North Ramford, and these two other gentlemen, these representatives that have been working with Carter. Is there anything that I'm missing?
No, just the National School Climate Center is out of New York City, it's the leading group for school climate, they've really pioneered and authored all of the research, the seminal work that's quoted in school climate, and then the work with state police or anything else, so it's a real tribute to North Ramford, I'm lucky to be partnering with them, and some of the work that we're doing may be spread to other schools and other districts as kind of a pilot in how to improve school climate sustain, so I'm excited about it. Thank you for mentioning it.
Great.
Any questions regarding the visit? I'll let you know as it gets closer to the work they're doing and when they're there. Okay, we have two field trips. There's a request that will need board approval, one is for a trip to Spain from April 15th to April 23rd. The board has been very supportive of our trips abroad over the last several years. We've had incredible experiences, numbers of kids who have been able to partake in those. I know Mr. Steffler and the Language Department is here this evening, if you have any questions. The itinerary is attached, the cost is attached. It's not attached.
Okay, the itinerary is...
The copy is here.
The...
The cost information is going to be handed out at this time. Oh, and it is in color.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the North Ramford High School field trip request to travel to Spain from April 15th, 2016, through April 23rd, 2016.
Second.
Now, are there any questions? Ms. Alvarez, she's here tonight to answer questions. Ms. Marata, who is the chair of the World Language Department? You can ask the questions in Spanish if you'd like. Feel free.
I'm still reeling with my iPad lesson. God, it's the first time we've done this.
It's the same company.
Same company.
E.T. Educational Tours.
The same company.
Are any questions?
I think it's a great trip. One of my daughters went down and they loved it, and it was fabulous.
And it's a credit to our students and the behaviors that they exhibit while they're traveling, because I've been doing this for nearly years, and it doesn't always go that way, and it jeopardizes at times when you don't have that trust and that faith, and we have a great staff and faculty and administrators that go on these trips, and they've done a wonderful job. This is my sixth year being associated with the travel here, and our kids have just been unbelievable.
Do you have a lot of interest so far?
There's quite a buzz, yes. Yes.
The target's twelve to fifteen kids?
Yes. Maybe more, but, yeah, keep it small. There's interest.
All right, roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Vumbek?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Enjoy enjoying it.
Okay, the second trip is a trip that Ms. Traynor, she's traveling to, that is exciting, Agawamass, on Friday, May 22nd, for a Trill and Thrill, I don't know if that's Trill and Thrill Music Festival. And she'll be accompanied by twenty-five students who participate in this competition. This is for information only, we do not need to vote for this. Informational, again, the Sound School, our students participate, have the ability to participate in a summer program through the Sound Regional Vocational Park Culture Center, and there are approximately 150 students that are served by these camps from surrounding towns. Our cost is $3,000 to participate, we've had a number of students, I don't have the accurate count right now over the years, how many kids have participated, I don't know that, I can find that out for you, but it has been a great success, and our support continues because students continue to enroll in it and really get something out of it. It speaks to the diversity piece a little bit below with the surrounding towns and greater payment, and to spend some time on the shoreline in the summertime outside of North Ramford. So it really is a great opportunity, and it's monies that we've accounted for each year, and we've never had a problem with programs.
Great opportunity, yes.
Sounds good.
If we can't bring the beach to North Ramford? Professional Development, Tracy, I'm going to turn this over to you for the PD activities that were completed over the two full days of professional development. The staff is very involved, the teaching staff, I don't know what things went on, but I'll let her highlight.
In addition to celebrating the 50th year anniversary of North Ramford High School, the district was involved in some district-wide activities, most centered upon the new teacher evaluation program that we adopted, that was a board adopted in August. What we did was provide the teachers with additional training, and I say additional because it's in addition to the statute required orientation, we also provided them with professional development regarding the new evaluation instrument, which is a rubric for what good teaching looks like. What we did was provide the teachers an opportunity to review the rubric, to look at case studies, videos of teachers' teaching, and to talk about what great teaching looks like. So not only about being proficient, but being exemplary, and how to move there. So they had that with both outside experts as well as expertise within the district. Another workshop centered upon using Teach Faith, which is a digital platform that we will use to manage all the evaluation data. The teachers uploaded all of their professional development plans. Over that time period, the principals and other administrators, including department chairs and teacher leaders that will be using the platform, have the opportunity to look at what it takes to complete an observation using that platform. What this allows us to do is have that communication about turning good teaching into great teaching, and how teachers can improve, and what we can do to support them. At the minute, council the other day, we presented some of the information that is now at our fingertips, meaning I can look at all of the evaluations that are done throughout the district and see where are teachers, which are the greatest strengths, and really what we can do in order to support them to get better in all areas of teaching. We had numerous additional workshops on technology, which we saw some of the use of that technology earlier this evening, as well as curriculum work, climate in various dis... in the various buildings. There was a bully update, bullying update, which is required by the state, and a couple other building initiatives that were addressed during the two days.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions for Ms. Tracy?
I think she mentioned the landscape maps. At the council meeting, we had the opportunity on Wednesday to look at some of the work by various departments on these landscape maps, which really gives us the K-12 picture in what we're doing, so we're making sure that all standards are being met, and it's a rigorous process, it's in-depth, and they've done a great job. So kudos to the departments that have started to complete the work. This will be ongoing, it'll morph into something that will continue to change over time, but a lot of good work has been completed, so thank you.
And by January, we hope to post at least landscape maps for the required courses and the major grade levels, maps at each grade level.
Thanks.
Sounds good.
So be able to access that online as a parent, to see, you know, timelines, what the kids are doing, what their expectations are, why we're doing things, and I think that'll be very helpful, aside from being able to view their grades online and their attendance, now they know, okay, this is what they're reading in their literature class, and this is when it's going to be assessed, and it really will be an informational book for our parents as well.
Any questions? Okay, might I ask you a question? Where do we stand with the process of the vice principal at the high school? Do you mind, do you update us or update me where we...
Absolutely. We have the closing date is the 25th Monday, and we have in excess of forty applicants. We have a timeline in place, and we're looking for a start date in probably the second to third week of February. So in December, we'll start interviewing, January, we will bring finalists forward and hopefully introduce, you know, to the board and give that person thirty days' window to exit, and mid to late February, we should be...
Thank you, Tracy.
Absolutely.
Okay, we move on to the committee reports, negotiations.
I did actually meet with the Negotiations Subcommittee this month, and also I'm continuing to meet with the various ASB groups, and hope to have that resolved before the first of the year.
Thank you. Budget and operations?
Well, there are two, in terms of the budget, the 14, 15 budget, there really is nothing in particular to comment on. The other thing that's related to the budget is you also have the draft of the 14, 15, 16 budget calendar. Most of this is simply describing things that are happening, either at scheduled administrative meetings, or scheduled board meetings, or budget Subcommittee meetings, but there are two dates on the second page for the two budget workshops that have to be firmed up. One is January 22nd, and the other is February 5th, and those are the two things that the board, we asked the board to approve or act on. If you want to check dates and defer that until December, we could do that.
With two members out.
If you want to.
January 22nd is a Thursday.
5th is a Thursday. All right, it's up to you. Everybody wants to go?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget workshop schedule as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Sure.
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Vumbek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then we move on to correct all instructions and strategic planning.
We had a visit from Totucket Valley Elementary Schools, thank you to Dr. Lindsay, as well as teachers Sheldon Thompson and Joe Moio, gifted and talented, and lead teacher respectively. They had students present to the Subcommittee on how they are using technology within their learning. I think it was a very impressive presentation. The students from third to fifth grade demonstrated their favorite apps and how their learning styles are addressed by technology, and how it's really giving them access to information and learning that they would otherwise not have access to.
It was great, it really was. The kids were phenomenal, they really were. They just get up there and speak, it's not adults, like, it's not better than we speak.
Yeah.
It was amazing. They did a great job.
And personally speaking, they sold me more listening to them than I think it's listening to two adults and their teachers, but watching the kids' enthusiasm and see what they're doing, and getting, you know, and come up interacting with us and correcting us what we're doing wrong. It shows me that they're interested. I mean, we could have teachers up here and say this and this, but bottom line is those kids coming out tonight and expressing their interest, and like Marcy already saying, it's outweighed by some of their, the way they were speaking and the way they were handling themselves. And it was interesting, one question I had is did it help their grades? And to every individual there, they said their grades increased by using technology, which to me meant more than, you know, just playing around with it. Your grades increased, that's the bottom line, so, thanks Tracy and Dr. Lindsay, I thought you did a very good job with that. Thank you.
Although they came up to help us with the iPads, one of us needed two students helping.
I could use three. I think we should put in the budget iPads for us.
I just was going to say, bro, sharpen your pencil.
We needed some experience on it, but that was, it was a great, and it was nice to see the parents come, so the parents interact, and it was a nice setting for it, to be honest with you. And anytime I think that, you know, when we can get those kids involved at any level, at least for me, it does mean a lot more, seeing the kids trying to solve you something almost, you know, and understanding and their excitement really, you know, kisses the next level.
From a business standpoint, though, they should make that presentation to the town council, because they were the first ones on this.
They did offer to do that, both the teachers and the students.
Did they?
Said that they would be happy to perform an encore, so...
If only we had a town council member here this evening with an educational background this time. Show that message real good, Doc.
Thank you to the teachers and students for all of their work, because they really did do a nice job.
They did a great job.
And I do, now that I've singled this out, I do want to thank her for attending those meetings and being there, because that's the conduit moving forward. When we go to represent, it's nice to have a representative there from the council that speaks the same language, that had a career in education, it really goes a long way, so thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to pension.
Yeah, we had a pension meeting, I think it was last week, wasn't it? And we had actually a report and a, to date, report on our investments in the pension fund, and everything is fine.
Look, everybody's happy. All right, move on to policy.
All right, I'll leave it in here, so, I'll give you the, it's right here. I don't need to read the whole thing.
Do you want to go with overview?
Yeah.
Do you just have some?
We have, we have two policies for first grade, and these are, everything we're dealing with here is really driven by changes in statute or regulations. And on P-1290, which is for a first grade, that's on access to education records, and this makes some changes in terms of timelines for accessing special ed records, and to define how records related to food and nutrition programs may be released without consent, and to define how records related to a child may be released to DCF without consent. And then the second one is P-2400, Parential Report of Child Abuse. This one really basically adds coaches to the list of mandated reporters, it makes some changes just in the structure, moving non-certified... It makes some changes just in the structure, moving non-certified staff from what was in other employees into the same section as teachers. And I think the intent in that is simply to sort of give it more weight. And also adds a specific prohibition from an employee being hindered or prevented by another employee from making a report. So again, this is all, these are all things that were done by statute or regulation. And the other four policies for second read and approval are the ones that we brought to you last month.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to approve policy P-1020, student attendance and truancy as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve policy P-1125, drug and alcohol use by students as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve policy 2250, family and medical leave of absence as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve policy P-3080, school volunteers as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ACES.
We had a meeting last week and nothing spectacular is going on. We're negotiating a lease for another school and our device, it's not the vice chair, it's second in command anyway, there, has been relieved of his duties and is pending termination.
Thank you. How was the lunch?
I think they voted you for lunch.
Colby by.
That was the bait to get you on that committee.
Okay, that's good.
August meetings at a restaurant, I think. Or is that a...
Okay, that's pension.
That's pension.
Go to the committee.
So I started on my new position on this today.
It's like...
Right? Anyhow, actually, there's a lot going on. We were talking about the roof at Tuckett Valley. I asked what the percentage of sloped versus flat would be. I got a vague 50-50 for the first meeting and I got a, received a vague 50-50 for the second meeting.
Fifty percent sloped.
Fifty percent sloped, fifty percent. Although by the second meeting, he did say that they had been up on the roof to look at the air handlers and I know nothing about the building committee stuff. I mean, this is really, I'm not the right person, but I'll try to explain the best I can. The equipment, that's on the roof. So the whole roof can't be sloped because part of it needs to sit level, obviously. To put it on a sloped roof would not be, it would be doable, just let it look nice. So he was going to try to come back with a more definitive number for the next meeting. They talked also about the lighting out here in the parking lot, that it's very dark at the driveway end of it. So the council is looking to install maybe one or two more lights at the bottom of the driveway, just to, you know, help for traffic purposes and, you know, a little bit of lawn maintenance. They talked about the sign for SCAMT Williams Community Center. Did anybody reach out to you?
I was at the council meeting on Tuesday, so that was discussed. And they're looking for additional monies from savings on various projects to incorporate. I don't think it would be the STEAP grant for that?
No.
I'm not sure of the cost of the signage or the signs, but it would be thousands of dollars.
Neither was PM. And I have a note here, can't we perhaps cut our costs, but can we have our architect perhaps design something and then set out to be made into a sign? Is that something that we can look at?
Yes.
Is that something we would want to look at? I mean, is that...
We could do it. We could get the school community involved.
Or is it more part of the progress?
The women involved, the cost sharing for the project, but just the scope of what we're looking to do.
But if they're not designing it, it would maybe change the cost somewhat.
Well, I think this will play out down with an architect and I think because the sign will be greater than X amount of dollars, if they're talking about an electronic sign or, you know, it's going to get in the $30,000 to $40,000 range, those lights, I think when we priced them out, they were expensive.
You mean the original pricing?
Pricing, yeah.
That was fairly high.
Significant. So I think an engineer, an architect will design into, I like the idea, love the idea. And we could, you know, present it at our communication meeting. These are the types of topics.
As long as they have conversation with them, that's fine.
You know, and I like the idea. And we could talk about it at communications.
Okay. We also talked about the water in the auditorium, lobby, the atrium. They said that it, the windows, because they sit so low to the ground, need to be reco-opped and that Bill was working on that and his team, that they were working on that and that he would just send them a letter when it's complete, but they were still going to wait a full however long. They said a year. Season's like a year to make sure that nothing else. They have money set aside for replacement tiles that if Bill wants to go pick out now, he can and just keep on hold, or if he would prefer to wait, he'll just roll the money if we don't pick them out by the end of this year. Let's see what else they talked about. The town talked about purchasing new fan units for the roof because there's no markup if they purchase them.
Right.
So there was minimal discussion about that.
At Tuckett Valley.
At Tuckett Valley.
And I think the plan was to continue with having John Florio install it, similar to it.
Yes, it's similar to what they did at RISB. And that's about it.
Great job. Nice job.
Oh, I, one more thing, I did ask if we were going to withhold money for the high school project to make sure that we had no leak so we don't run into something the same problem we did at the intermediate school. And they said that they, until it's, until we get the warranty, there is money held out and then there's a timeframe after the warranty that they still hold the money. So we've had some substantial waiting since then, so I think.
Now, piggybacking on your report, looking at capital projects at the high school, we know that the science lab, all of the bathrooms in the building and the track were three capital projects that we deferred and that we're looking to do when the winter season ends, specifically the track. And then we're going to roll into the summer months to do the lab and the bathrooms. When we costed the bathroom replacement, we just did fixtures and what that would mean, as you recall, the price was $118,000. That would be replacing sink for sink or the stall. It would not involve doing anything with the floors, anything with the ceilings or the lighting fixtures or painting those bathrooms. So realistically, you would still...
And John did the work.
And John doing the work. So realistically, you would have the same old bathrooms, just with new fixtures in there. Really not a good idea. Nevis and Young went and cost estimated to do all of those things, not at the rate that John would be able to do it for as a licensed plumber. And I think he did it at the rate that would be...
A contract rate.
Contract rate.
So that, this estimate includes installation labor by a contractor as opposed to internal...
So we can stay a little longer there.
But then painting and doing the lights and doing it the right way, it doubled the price. Came in at $236,000. So we can replace everything the way it is and leave them looking like 1960. Or if the council approved or we did down a section at a time and then revisited this next year, I think obviously personally, I would much rather do it right, make them look brand new, spend $118,000 and do as many as we can and look for the other. Or if the council wanted to accept and move and add additional money to do that, we would get that done next summer.
So instead of doing four bathrooms per se, we do two the right way and hold up on the other two?
Right. That makes sense.
Yeah.
They're desperately in need of...
Absolutely.
An update. It really makes no sense unless we're building a new high school in the next, with the new roof on there, it's not going to happen. We need to modify and renovate and get those bathrooms up to where kids will go and use them.
And the other problem with John doing the work is then, you know, that's going to pull him out of the loop for a significant part of, even if we did it next summer, for a significant part of the summer. And frankly, he was the one that did most of the installation of the ventilators at the high school, so if we're looking to do the same thing at Tuckett Valley, it's just, he's only one person.
And we had that discussion about, you know, the use of John. And when we do pull him and put him on these major jobs, the disruption in other buildings where, you know, in every building, there's a laundry list of things that need to be done that require his expertise. So it's kind of a catch 22.
Okay, thank you. Communications? Calendar?
Calendar, there's some information in your board pack and it's really, we're still in the, in the early stages of it, but it does provide the draft calendar that was released by ACES. And that's the one that we would be working with. My understanding at this point in time is 15-16 is still voluntary compliance, but 16-17 is expected to be mandatory compliance. And so again, I just kind of want to keep this on the burner somewhere. Once we get final versions from ACES, then we would be in a position to actually convene our calendar committee and, because there probably is going to be some leeway in terms of district days that are, that may be able to vary from the common calendar.
Thanks. New business?
Time out.
Okay. Uh, new committee assignments?
There's some vacancies. I should share that. There's some vacancies. So I don't know if Diane was able to fill any of these vacancies. No pressure. You don't have to commit tonight.
Yeah, sure, you're on camera right now, remember. No pressure.
Yeah, why don't you take time to think about it and then you let us know. Wherever the empty blocks are, Diane would look good there.
Do you want us, do you want us to put that on as an agenda item for next one?
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I mean, I'm sure Diane has responsibilities at night too. Maybe if we just told her days of the week or how many times they meet in time, so budget operations needs, I don't think...
We can, we can send it electronically.
Yeah.
And that way you have it.
Just she knows all her schedule.
Right. We'll get that out too.
Yeah, that's your point.
Yeah, because this doesn't, well, you know, it doesn't sort of say. The budget is scheduled to meet monthly approximately an hour before coordinating, so that takes care of budget operations. Policy is often as monthly.
That's a good point, maybe we could add that to this, you know, down the road.
It's not specifically all over.
Next month, you'll be on.
Okay.
And the other...
I'll have that seat next month.
Any new business? Good to the board?
Yes, good to the board. Colby is homesick, but she wanted me to please read this. I want to say thank you to the staff at JHS for inviting us to attend the Veterans Day ceremony. It was so nice to see so many people being recognized within our community. The kids were excited to sing for the many servicemen and women. With other towns using this day as a simple vacation day, my hope is that RBRAC continues to utilize this in school day to remember and celebrate all those who have served and protected our country. I attended as well and it was, it was fantastic. The kids were so well behaved. They were actually really intrigued by it. They really, they were so well behaved. Phil was there.
Thank you, Phil.
Phil was there in full uniform with the drum corps. Is that what it is, the drum corps? Carrying, bearing the flag. He did a great job.
Very excellent.
And thank you to Jerome Harrison for inviting us.
Yeah, I'd like to, go ahead.
I'd like, I'd like that. I mean, this is the second year in a row we've been over to Jerome Harrison Veterans and it just gets better. And it really was amazing to walk into that gym and there's like 400 kids in that gym and not a sound, all sitting quiet. Unbelievable. It was just unbelievable.
Great day. And then, and having 70 veterans.
I don't know how many veterans.
Oh, gosh.
70? 70 veterans.
70?
Amazing.
Yeah, I mean...
And the breakfast, they had breakfast prior too and it was, Michael Auger did a wonderful job feeding the vets. They love that. They ask for their grandkids to come in and eat with them.
We did the Moran School in Wallingford on Monday, same type of thing. And I don't think there were 10 veterans there. It was really disappointing. The kids were good, but the veterans didn't show it. I was really surprised.
Thank you, Phil. Like Scott mentioned, the love for live event, I thought that was a tremendous event. I personally like to thank all the townspeople that came out, but I also like to thank Scott because I know you very orchestrated this whole thing, started and I think came through better than you probably anticipated. And Michael Auger opened the concession stand, Mr. Steffler. I think you say it was a great event, but, you know, for our purposes, the high school and, you know, yourself personally, I know you spoke to me earlier on, you had this vision and I think beyond what your vision was, to be honest with you, he did a great job in pulling this off, so I want to compliment everybody and the town for a great event. It was good. And my last thing would be I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, enjoy yourselves.
Don't shop too much?
Don't eat too much.
Don't shop.
Well, you can shop if you want to.
Friday, but that's not a holiday.
But everybody on the board, everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
You too.
Visitors oppressed? Mr. Potter?
Tonight, watching the late news, we got some very depressing news. Our re-elected governor is going to go after educational funds. I guess this is probably for Don. Don, do you have any hint what he's going to try to do? And how much damage can he do? Can he go after established budgets and not fund them?
Probably.
You know, again, we relied too. I didn't vote for him. It's on camera. You know, you're going after the future of the state and it just aggravates me that he starts with the education. And then you wonder why people move out of state and stuff. But again, I mean, to just hear this tonight and within, I mean, the voting machines are still warm when you hear this, so. But I didn't know if you, three years...
I haven't received any other communication about it. I mean, unfortunately, to answer one question is we obviously are at some risk because we do get a lot of state money.
And they can just, whatever they decide not to give it to you, hold it back, right? Yeah, okay. Well, I just wondered if, you know, how it's going to affect what you're going through next year, you know? You can have a dream budget, but then what's going to happen? You have a technical plan N now instead of an A, B and C.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Don, do I need to amend or just make the motion?
You probably should have amended the agenda first and then make the motion.
I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend the agenda to include an executive session.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.